I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilmember Connie Rodriguez, Strong, Stransky, and Mayor Gonzalez.
She is on a public safety call three times a week. Um, we have provided notices. One of the things that we have done to sort of help enforce the directives is we have assisted in providing notices to all of our hotel and motel owners to restrict renting rooms to those from out of town or not on essential business. Um, we, as I believe you are as well, receiving updates in the League of Cities who are monitoring things closely on the state and federal level. Um, just helping us with the kind of things that we're dealing with as a city. And those are, of course, we have, we always have lots of timelines and some of those we're not going to be able to meet. And so we're trying to relax those mandated timelines. Um, we've got, we are continuing to look at, we're, we're working with Brook Trails on the, on the, um, agreement, settlement agreement. And we are working on bond refinancing for our sewer bonds. Um, I have been on many, many calls regarding our local finances and what is, what is to be expected and what we're, what we're going to be looking at in the next few months. Obviously, all municipalities are concerned regarding the potential loss of sales tax that are, that is going to be coming into our city. Because as you know, we depend a great deal on our sales tax. We are dependent more than half of our income, actually more, approximately two thirds of our income comes from sales tax. So any decrease in sales tax is no worry. I did talk to our financial advisors in this regard and I am somewhat buoyed by the fact that many of our, our top sales tax producers are essential businesses who continue, continue to remain open and who are active during this period and who are actually quite busy. Uh, one of our essential businesses, I'm actually very proud to say, is Metal FX. Uh, they are, they remain open because they are actually manufacturing a part of the test, the COVID-19 test. So they have been asked to remain open, but, uh, so it's kind of exciting that Willett's gets to be a part of that. Um, we are curtailing our purchasing and we're looking to cancel or postpone any projects that will require matching funds of a not of an in-kind nature. Uh, as you know, we have a runway project that would have required quite a bit of matching funds. And we are looking at postponing that for a year. However, in conversations, um, with the, with the, I believe it's the FDA, um, they, we actually may get additional funding so that we will not have to have a match. So we are exploring that. Uh, anything that we don't have matches on, we'll continue to work on. Uh, we continue to obviously be concerned for our residents who are experiencing losses of income. Um, there is a, there is a discussion regarding mortgages and evictions and things of that nature. The governor did today announce that, um, a 90-day, uh, for, for those who are affected by the COVID-19 crisis can apply for a 90-day forbearance, up to a 90-day forbearance on their mortgage payments. I believe this is for residential only, but I'm not certain of that because I, I only got the blurb of it. It's not a for everybody to stop paying your mortgage, but it is something you have to actually apply for and be granted before you're able to do that. Um, the eviction relief, uh, we haven't seen anything on a state level, although the governor has empowered localities to look at forbearance of evictions. Uh, no city has done that yet because there are a lot of questions about this. And I think we're all sort of holding back to see if the state will do a blanket one, which would make it obviously easier. Um, some of the questions that come up with this are, you know, what happens to people um, who are, it's not for non-payment of rent, but it's for breaches of the lease or property damage or other things. Uh, would it be a blanket eviction? Would it be, um, people who have been arrears in rent before the crisis or only for people being arrears in rent since the crisis? Um, when you're looking at, uh, there are actually low-income property owners who rely on rental property as their source of income. Uh, do we want to, are there carve-outs that could be available? This is actually a pretty complicated matter. I know that the, uh, it came as somewhat of a surprise, I believe, to the county administrator that they're in a meeting yesterday with the county board of supervisors. They passed something for unincorporated areas. County administrator has not really looked into that. We're not quite sure of the provisions of that. It did not get looked at by staff. And so, um, we don't know what to say about that one yet. Again, the other cities are sort of looking for, um, a state answer that would be more uniform. Um, I did also, we had a conference call with West who was talking, who wanted to bring the cities together to talk about, uh, the effects to local business. It is acknowledged that local businesses are hurting, but probably the most effective, absolutely the most affected are the micro businesses that, that we have in this town and in our towns who are, who are going to be most severely affected. Unfortunately, they had no answers. They sort of just wanted to hear about what the, what the things, what was, what was happening downtown in all of our downtowns. And, um, they were talking about possible loans with, um, EFC and those sorts of loans. However, it was brought up and it was, uh, it is not likely that they would loosen up their lending guidelines so that they would likely only be lending to people who they thought could repay the loans. So that's a problem. Um, I also brought up the fact that we've got a, um, if people have business insurance, um, sometimes there's, uh, coverage for interruptions in business. And, and those businesses should be looking into that to see if they've got interruption in business and whether this could cover that. Um, in a REMIF meeting that I had earlier, I was asking, also asking about that. That is something that REMIF is looking at for cities. If we've got, uh, interruption in business, that could apply to the cities because we are covered for that. But we don't know whether it's covered for a pandemic. We know it's covered for floods and fires and those sorts of things, but, um, they're, they are researching that right now. Um, there is a, uh, working on short-term financial strategies, um, talking a lot about that. The one thing that is nice is the, uh, there is some relief that's been thrown into municipal bond market, which really blew up a few days ago. Uh, it made it pretty impossible to do anything. Rates went sky-high because nobody wanted to touch municipal bonds. Uh, that has eased quite a bit with influx of cash in the federal government, which is really wonderful. Um, so that will help us. The other thing that I have asked for and I'm, uh, reaching out to our local representatives is to see if we can get some forbearance on bond payments on our USDA loans. Um, I think that this is something, that's something I brought up to the league. They were excited about the idea and they're helping me work on that. Um, we actually have a $600,000 around that bond payment due early May. If we could forbear that, that would be for 12 months or so. That could certainly help us through. Um, the courts reported on a call that they are closed to walk-ins in the county. And there's currently a six-month wait for, for jury trials. Um, they did say that there are, there are no pending evictions in the Mendocino courts right now. And they are only operating on a walk-in, they are closed to walk-ins and, um, so I think it's going to be tough to file an eviction even if you wanted to. And that is, I think, all I have right now. I know people continue to be concerned about our homeless population. Um, the good news, well, there's not much good. The good news is that I, uh, I, we did put a portable bathroom out on, because we had to close our, our, um, our regular bathrooms in our parks. We put a porta potty into, that is ADA accessible, into our parking lot for the needs of homeless or other folks who don't have access to bathrooms and are cleaning that regularly. Um, I think it's really important to, to look out for the needs of homeless who don't have other options. Um, what we have been told, you know, there's, there's, as yet, you know, cities have no money for homeless help. Um, it all, it comes to the county. The county is working on a strategy. And, um, UKI is, is struggling with that right now. We are not, um, however, if we do see anyone who is homeless and it looks like they are ill, um, we are to call the county and ask for some assistance so we can help that person or isolate them. Um, that is all I have for right now and I, and I can take questions.
Um, I thought I should, I'm, I'm just going to go through everybody real quick, but I just wanted to, and I'll have some at the end. But so Stephanie, right now, I think, and the rest of you can chime in in a minute when you have your chances. We're all feeling the need for information and I, I would appreciate it if, um, if nothing else, uh, a weekly briefing, or, uh, you always don't get about calling me, so I'm, I'm willing to take a call anytime. Something different comes up, then something we can pass on to the, uh, community, even if it's me, the status quo. Because we, I, I've been getting, uh, some of the county stuff via other sources and, and obviously the league's been great. But that, that's one thing. And, uh, there was something else by hand, but, uh, that's, that's the one thing I think that we're all starting for information. And I walk my dog, he gets me away from people, uh, people ask me questions. And even if something is simple, it's that garbage thing the other day that Greta got ahold of me and I got ahold of Jerry Ward, those sort of things. But, um, we can help out, I think, uh, we want to be able to.
Absolutely. So I, I've been pushing out information, sometimes several times a day. And so I'm not quite sure, I, I don't have any more information to push out. I, I'm, so I'm, I'm struggling here because I'm, I'm really pushing out a ton of information. So I, and it's going on my, our, our website, it's going on our Facebook page, it's going, it's taped to the door. Um, if you want, uh, I'm trying to email people as I get directors from the county. Um, it, I don't, maybe I need to understand more because I, I'm not holding anything back.
And I'm, I'm getting stuff, but I figure, and maybe, um, I, I want to make sure also that our employees are taken care of. I mean, if we have plenty of PPE, PPE equipment for all of them and those sort of things. Um, to make sure, you know, those sort of things. I think it's the internal things. So again, um, I, I get some of the stuff you're getting, you're sending to me, I, I'm getting that. But, uh, and again, I'm, I'm going to let everybody else ask questions too. So at this point, I, I'll pass it on to Greta. I am getting some of the stuff you're talking about, so I just want to make sure that we continue slow. So, um, I'll start off with Greta, then, so Greta.
Uh, hi there. Thank you for the report, Stephanie, and thank you for the, uh, email you sent out today with updates regarding the second order. Uh, that was an incredibly helpful email. Um, I think one of the comments that I, I made last week, sometimes the things that, um, you forward to us tend to be things that we've already received, either by going directly onto the county's website or because we were receiving the same updates from the League of California Cities. So the ones that come directly from you that are basically your synopsis of the information that you've heard are really the most helpful. Um, because sometimes, uh, the, the things that you take away are things that we don't take away when we're reading them. So it's, it's kind of, I mean, I feel like it's, uh, it's a, it's a situation where the more minds on a thing, the better. And I understand that this is, um, a touchy area because we do have to be conscious of the, um, council manager form of government. And we, for myself personally, I don't intend to step on your toes or, um, have any, uh, hand in operational portions. But I just feel like right now as a council member, the single best thing that I can do for our residents is to share information, help stop the rumors, help people, people, um, feel that, um, the government is working to, um, at least address some of these very real concerns that they're feeling. So that's, that's my two cents for the request for more information. Um, in regards to further questions, I just, um, I appreciated you bringing up this idea of business interruption insurance and even that being something available to the city. Uh, I did want to point out that I've heard from, uh, a few fellow business owners, uh, micro-business owners, that they have tried that tack and have been denied because their policies have a virus clause. So, um, I encourage all business owners and the city to look at their insurance policies and see if that's an option that they can take. But don't be surprised if you have a virus clause also. Um, forbearance on the city loans that we have, I think that's a great idea. There's a way that we can push out payments. But, um, some of the things I'm hearing from community members who are being offered 90-day forbearance on their mortgages, for instance, are that that would be followed by a lump sum due at the end of the 90 days. For people who are out of work, that doesn't really do them any good. And I would also want to make sure that the city doesn't get into a situation where we would owe a lump sum that could tax our, um, finances. So just something to, um, put, um, out there. Um, regarding evictions, I'm glad to hear there are no pending evictions in the court right now. Um, we did, uh, Sabrina and I spoke, uh, had a conference, teleconference this morning with a member of the Fort Bragg City Council and listened, um, to her regarding their eviction process that was there. I do worry that trying to do some kind of an eviction moratorium would just put undue burden on our city staff right now. Uh, I, I kind of feel, although I understand the very real concerns of the community out there, um, I feel that sort of the hold on the court right now is protecting us somewhat and really hoping there's clarity from the governor, maybe a less piecemeal approach can be, um, formulated. And then finally, I just want to say the city of Fort Bragg did form last May a COVID ad hoc committee. Their intent with that committee, that is, people by two of their, um, council members, is really to be kind of a liaison between city and residents to provide information. And the, and the real goal is to take pressure off of city staff from having to push out press releases and, um, social media releases. Um, again, I know that in our city, we have a little bit of, um, concern about overlap, but I just wanted to put that out there as a potential to really help you, Stephanie, and to help city staff. So something to consider and that might, uh, might, might, might be of help in the future.
Uh, Sabrina? Yes, I, uh, I share a lot of the concerns and comments that Greta came up, uh, spoke about. I too checked into my, uh, business insurance and there is a virus clause. If it was a bacteria that we were struggling with, it's covered, but if it's a virus, it's not, which is unfortunate. I'm hearing the same from many others. Um, I was curious, uh, I was watching, uh, a segment on CalPERS and, uh, how rates are, are going to go up. And I was just curious, uh, Stephanie, if you have any information on that and how at risk you think we might be and if we should start, um, what plan we might want to put in place for that. I won't ask any more questions, so you can answer that one.
Well, PRS has issued a statement that although, obviously they've lost a lot of money in their fund, they feel very secure. And, um, and they're sort of cautioning people not to worry. Um, I would expect that, I would hope that because the state government is actually fiscally pretty strong, that they would be assisting PRS and not putting all the, uh, on the, on the cities. Uh, I think it's a wait and see, there's really nothing we can do about it. Um, I am most concerned with our short-term financial outlook. Um, we are similar to the micro businesses in that we are essentially a micro-city in that we have very few resources and, um, we don't have a lot of capital. And we are the most vulnerable among the municipalities in, in view of our size. Um, the financial crunch that we're going to take is going to be a short-term financial crunch in the next year and a half. Uh, it is, um, you know, we had a financial crunch. We have an 8.2% decrease in sales tax overall over the last eight years. Um, and I, and I've talked about that at length, I've talked about it in public gatherings. And folks were very concerned about that and they wanted to make sure our city was strong, which is why we were planning on enhancing our, our income because it is the only way that we could survive. Um, given this, uh, we are going to be facing increasing pressures and, um, it is, it is going to be absolutely crucial that we have some short-term financial, um, some financial help. Because in the long term, I do believe that we're going to be able to regroup and, and do better. But in the short term, um, we've got some issues. And this is, and this is, uh, what I was going to suggest is that we, um, I wanted to convene our finance, uh, ad hoc committee to talk about some of the, um, strategies that I've been talking about so we can talk, talk to the ad hoc committee about that. Um, and I'd like to do that in the next month because there's a lot of different strategies out there. Um, and it's, uh, a lot of, because we do have potentials for, for reorganizing and various, reorganizing debt and, and financial methods of creating some liquidity in the, in the near future. So that's what I'm looking at. And, um, I'm, so I, I have been, you know, I put out press releases on the 16th, on the 18th and, uh, pushed those out and it was very helpful because often I don't know what to push out to, to folks. Um, I've just been sort of like trying to push out as much as I can. If, if they're requested for more localized information, that is very helpful. And what I can do is maybe, uh, if I could do an email three times a week and just send, send information to folks and they can, uh, they can post it if you'd like. I only post things on the City of Willett's website. Uh, I don't post on other social media, uh, areas because I don't think it's appropriate for a city to do that. But if council members do that, I think it's great. So maybe that's the way we do it. I push out information three times a week via an email and then you guys can push out information how you want. Uh, I think that would be really helpful. Does that, that sound?
That sounds, that sounds good. I, I think that what I'm looking for too is not the standard stuff that we're getting from the county because, uh, probably most of, most of us are looking at that already. I'm looking for the information that you probably have access to that we're not getting. For example, uh, I know Greta and I and probably others, but I just haven't talked to anybody else because of the Brown Act. We're attending lots of different types of community forums where we're discussing a variety of issues. And so we're just wanting to get, when you're having those conversations, what can you, what can you share with us? Or what specifically applies to, to Willett's that we can take away? The intent is to give out information to reassure people.
Right, I, yeah, I think that's great. Uh, like for example, just, uh, you know, I, I put out a notice that all our facilities are closed, including the dog park, but yet, uh, people, I think we're still confused. Is the dog park open? No, it's not. Just, uh, so if I can put that out there and, and maybe you guys can help me, uh, get that out into the, into the community on, on, yes, it's closed and, and yes, the public bathrooms are closed. And, um, and that would be, I think that would be a great way to do it. And, um, and I know that Sabrina, you and Greta have been active on the social media front and I really appreciate that.
What would, yeah, I think, um, can I, can I jump there for just a second, Sabrina?
Go ahead.
Um, I just, just to add to that, um, I have noticed a couple of posts on the City of Willett's Facebook page about things like the dog park. And, um, if I don't notice until four or six hours later, then, um, a lot of, um, rumor and nonsense can start on the community pages. And so what I think could help is if, um, you're going to post something on the Facebook page, um, send out a quick email to, um, the council and since you can do it now as a chain, um, we have a heads up. And so for those of us who are active on, on social media or who have direct contact like Jerry with so many members of the community, we can sort of be, um, in real time with it instead of kind of going, oh, wait, we didn't know about that and let me go and look and see what the post was. So that, that's one way of helping take that pressure off of you when you release something and we're not all on the same page.
That'd be great. Yeah, no, that sounds good. That's a good idea. Will do. But, um, yeah, no, I think that's great. And, um, keep in mind, I'm, you know, my normal role is at PIO and so I'm struggling with, I have not been, uh, on the City of Willett's Facebook page much, so, um, struggling with that a little bit because I have to, I, I get things, I have to turn them into a PDF and then I have to turn them into a picture and then I take a picture of it and then it goes on the Facebook page and then the links go dead. And so it's been a little frustrating, uh, because Facebook is not the ideal, um, avenue to get some of this information out. Uh, our website's much easier and Jim Robbins is helping me do that. And sometimes I want to just refer people back to our webpage where the, where the links are live. Uh, but I, I really appreciate you guys, uh, helping with that. That's great.
All right, um, Matt?
I think Sabrina has some other things.
I'm almost done. Thanks for your patience. Um, I just have one last question about, or actually two questions. One is, can you give us a quick update? Uh, I think you briefly talked about you feel like we have enough, uh, supplies. How much supplies do you think that, uh, that we have? I mean, do you feel that if this went on for three more weeks that we were good? If it carried on for two or three months that we might have a situation? So that's question one. And then question two is, I'm curious about, uh, the workload and the pressure on the staff that you still have remaining. Are there projects that we should be aware of that, aside from the one you told us about, that aren't going to happen? Or are you finding that because some people are able to work from home, that they're able to dig into other projects? Like for your safe, for example, uh, the firehouse or other things like that? I'm just curious if we're feeling like we have a heavier load or some opportunity?
Well, it really depends. Uh, I mean, personally, um, yeah, I'm pretty overwhelmed, um, just to be perfectly honest. Um, but most of it is just trying to keep up with the information and doing my regular job too. And that's been tough. Um, I think the, um, community development department is doing great. A lot of them are working from home. Um, they're working on pretty much the same things that they're, they've been working on. Um, but they are, you know, trying to, to, uh, arrange their work so they can be at home or away from each other. And, and that's been good. Our public work staff is, is, we're down one or two people, um, you know, because of the loss of Bill Wilson. And, um, that's been, uh, it's been hard, but we're also sort of down to basics. We are doing basic things. Uh, but the, our public works folks are out in the community. Um, actually, our tenant is who is our, our new superintendent. He's actually taken a day or two off, which I think is good. He's been under a ton of pressure because he has to deal with some family things. All of us are having to deal with things with our families and shoppings are the same pressures as, as other members of the community. Um, I'm going to let the, uh, our chief is on the line. I'm going to let him speak to how the, the police force is doing. Chief Allen, are you on the line?
I am. Hello, everybody. This is Chief Allen. Uh, our police department is, uh, uh, actually remarkable in terms of their response and ensuring that the community is safe. So currently at the intake level, our dispatchers are, uh, evaluating, uh, about 30 to 40% of our cost for services. And in those instances, uh, that are not, uh, of a non-emergency nature, we've created a form, a contact form where we can capture that information and get back to the community members. Our reality is that we're bare bones, as you are. Our reality is that we're bare bones, as you all know, and we'll continue to respond to calls for services of an emergency nature. However, like everywhere else, we're challenged in that area. I think my main message to the community would be, with everything that's going on, is to please, please continue to live up to the spirit of the orders in terms of self-isolating and that type of thing. The longer we're in this crisis, there may be a tendency for folks to start wanting to get out and, you know, back out into the community and that's understandable, it's human nature. We really, really, more than ever, have to have everybody be vigilant and simply don't be out and about unless you absolutely, absolutely need to. I'll take any questions you might have.
Do we have any, I know we already had a small police force. Do we have any officers from that small force that we have left that have had to stay home for personal reasons or care for child or anything of that nature? Or have we been able to retain all of our officers?
As far as we've been able to retain our officers for the most part, but officers are still being required to fill in shifts. As you know, they haven't had steady days off in quite some time, so I am concerned about the fatigue factor, which is why we have had to limit our response substantially to some radio calls.
Thanks, I'm done with... Yeah, so that's why, you know, we continue to look for, while we're dealing with this crisis, we also have to look at the ten thousand foot view and not just these next three weeks, but the next year and once we get out of this, how we are going to deal with our city as a whole and revenue generation so that we can get back on track. You did ask about supplies. I'm happy to say that our supplies are good. We just got a shipment of hand sanitizer, which was welcomed. We still have a closet full of toilet paper and we have a, and the public works department was able to get a shipment of gloves in and so they were delighted. And so it looks like all of our safety supplies are intact and people are using the right equipment and that does not seem to be an issue at all right now. But thank you for asking about that, I think that's very important. I know our wastewater and water staff are operating on a somewhat of a skeletal crew just so that somebody could always sort of be home and be healthy in case somebody gets sick, so we don't always have the same people on the same shift all the time infecting each other. So we're sort of practicing that in order to always be mindful that someone will remain healthy. And I think that our water and wastewater departments, their spirits are really good and they check in often, which is great. Our engineering department is busily working on the same projects they have been working on, although again, I've asked them to sort of slow down on their spending and if a project can be postponed for three months, maybe they should think to do that. I know that we have a moratorium on water shut-off and our residents are being great about paying their water bills. We need that income to be able to keep our water fund strong and, but I am mindful is that there's some people not going to be able to pay their bills, so we may, you know, have some less, someone less funds in that water fund. So people are just being very frugal right now and I think that that's the order of the day is fragility. Thank you, Stephanie. So, Matt?
Well, I think that Greta and Suprema have kind of covered a lot of the things that I would have said and I appreciate that what I get from Stephanie's reports is more, it's kind of the highlights that really pertain to us, whereas I get flooded with an awful lot of things from the statewide level and internet and all of that that are a little overwhelming and I can't read all of that. So if I can get Stephanie's sort of what really pertains to us locally kind of reports, especially if she can do it three times a week, that would be great. And I really appreciate that she's able to do that and that Greta and Suprema can put that out on Facebook. I do very, very little on Facebook, so I don't think I'm being helpful on that score, but anyway, I feel that you're doing all the right things and appreciate taking in with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Larry, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I'm, Virginia and I are staying home and I don't have any access to emails or anything, so it's pretty good here. I thank Greta and to everybody that does the emails. I will say that Stephanie has called me a couple of times each day or maybe three times each day or whatever it takes to keep me involved and I appreciate that. And I appreciate all, especially all of you that have the internets and this kind of stuff, keeping the people involved. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have emails. Sorry. Well, sorry, I was just going to say that the reason I'm calling Larry is that every time I push something out on Facebook, that's when I call Larry, is hey Larry, this is what I did. But now I have a good plan, so I can know how to move forward and I'm going to keep on calling you Larry to make sure that you're in the loop.
Thank you. And Stephanie, I think, and I think after we discussed it, I think you kind of got what we were talking about. I don't think it's, I think we were getting all the stuff from the county and all that you were pushing out there, which is great because we're getting supplies, but that local kid and I appreciate Greta and Suprema pushing out locally. And I do want to push out what I call the party line. It's not Suprema's line or it's not Greta's line, but rather just coming from the city and, you know, if it's something that they can push out, it's even better because that way, and again, when I did my letter, I wanted to include all of you in there because I know everybody gets called or hit up and so that we'd all be speaking from the same voice, so to speak. Jim, do you have anything for us?
Uh, no, not really. I've been working with Neri and O'Brien a little bit today, trying to get this agreement buttoned down and I think we're making progress.
Okay. So Stephanie, I guess, I remember during the last financial crisis when TARP and all of that came out, the feds, when they finally rolled out some, which I know that first bailout things were coming out, that they ended up with shovel-ready projects to kickstart the economy and so I get we have to watch our spending and all that, but I would hope if there's projects that we can have shovel-ready in case some money is freed up like last time. I think that would be the forward move that I'd like to embrace. But I also kind of see, I don't like, personally like to spend money I don't have, so I get that too, so.
Sorry? The money that I was...
I'm sorry. So, if you want to...
Our cash flow issues in the next year that we're going to be experiencing are in projects and shovel-ready projects can stimulate the economy. But what we're looking at here is operational income for the city. In other words, I need to make payroll. I need ready liquidity to be able to pay our folks and to, and that is really my first and to pay our insurance bills and to pay the bills. So that is my first order of the day is to figure out how I can keep enough liquidity in our accounts so that we're going to be secure after this passes and until our economy picks up again. That's what I'm stressed out more with our financial partners.
I get that 100% and I agree with you there. There was, oh, and our tax, I guess at some point we will still continue with that. I'm not sure how popular it'll be given what's happening now, but I still like to propose for that.
Yeah, I have received a ton of positive feedback on that. It has become, just to be perfectly honest, it's going to be a necessity for us to survive. And I do hear a number of, you know, I gave a presentation on the Rotary, the Rotary Club was really supportive, our unions are supportive, people who are supportive of the police are extremely supportive of it. And I hear people say, come on, you've got to do this, you've got to do this. So, you know, the council hasn't put it on the ballot yet, so we are still in a position where we can advocate for it until we make that vote. And, but so far, especially in this time, it's a very small portion that would do, that we can leverage into an enormous amount of good for our community. And we're going to need that to be able to rebuild. So that's my two cents on that.
I have a quick question, Jerry?
All right.
Greta, Stephanie, I just wanted to circle back to something you have been discussing, how our wastewater treatment plant is holding up and how staff seems to have good morale. I just wondered if the message they put out several days ago asking folks not to flush Lysol wipes and things of that nature, has that been heated? Have they felt that that situation has improved?
It's definitely improved, but we need to keep that message out there. Actually, the Willet's Weekly reached out to me today and wanted to do an article on it, which I think is great. So I'm going to hook Matthew Kane up to our water folks so that he can do an article on exactly that issue to get that message across. But yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, and again, I think that's what, that kind of impression that I didn't realize we had that problem. I knew that they were having that problem in some of the rural areas, they had septic issues, but I think Matt posted something about all the baby wipes and things clogging up their sewer too, so. But yeah, that's just one of those, people say, how are things going? I go, don't flush your baby wipes, it'd be nice to know people that. But yeah, that's important. Okay. Do we have anything else or does anybody from the public have anything like that?
Hello, this is Ron Moorhead, Willis Chamber of Commerce.
Hello, Ron.
Thank you. I just want to let the council know and the city citizens know that the Willis Chamber Board is working on a number of initiatives and programs to try and help the businesses get through this as we do go through it, as well as, once it is over, how we can help the businesses improve their business, get the citizens and the local residents into the businesses, maybe, I'm not sure exactly what we're doing because the board is working on a couple of different programs and looking at a different few avenues. So we're working on that so that once this is over, we can really make our businesses stronger. The other situation is we're working on a number of initiatives and programs outside of the county so that once this is over, we can bring tourism back here with hopefully good programs with our hotels, our restaurants, and of course, our businesses and our attractions. So the Willet's Board, the Chamber Board, is looking at all sorts of different avenues to work with, visit Mendocino, even some of out-of-county programs or organizations to see what we'll be able to do in the interim, but as well, once this is over, what we can do to really make a major impact to bringing people back to Mendocino County and particularly Willet's.
Thank you, Ron. Is anybody else out there that wants to speak?
Uh, our HR, I thought our HR person was on the line, but I wanted, I didn't speak to HR. That is an area that is undergoing a great deal of stress right now. Karen is working on payroll. It's been really tough and municipal payroll is a very complicated process. Without an up-to-date financial system, it's really terrible and she's, I have to commend her for working so hard on getting that done. I know that unfortunately, there's a lot of mistakes being made by the company that we hired and it's been really tough and I want to give her some kudos on that.
All right. And as far as other staff, Stephanie, that, again, I think this has been asked already, but everybody is, I guess, is there a plan in place as people get sick for crucial staff or anything like that that...
We're not letting them go. I mean, we don't come, there's staff. You know, June is, so it's tough. I am, you know, tomorrow is an off Friday. I am actually going to take it off. I'm of course going to be available by phone, but if it's an emergency and everybody knows where to reach me, I'm not going anywhere, but going to try to take a day off. They've got other staff on medical leave and they need to stay there so they can get healthy and strong and, but we can't get anywhere. It's going to be really hard to operate the city on any less than we have right now, let me tell you.
Well, that's a concern I have and I guess I'll just throw it out, you know, especially things like water, wastewater, have we explored, I guess, looking at work trials being closed, that we help each other out or have some sort of agreement as...
We actually, yeah, we are actually planning for all of that. We have contingencies in place for our wastewater and our water departments and the way we have it staffed is to manage that situation. So I think that Scott Herman has arranged that really well without getting into any operational details and I wanted to assure you that I'm very comfortable with that, with the way they've arranged their schedules and we're good.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I want to know, is that you're looking at that, so.
Yes.
Okay, if at this point I'll take a motion to adjourn and then we'll convene into closed session.
I don't think we need a motion, but I'll record if you want.
Okay, Stephanie, thank you. And thank you. All right, Jim, I guess you're going to fall back on the plan. Is, so we're going to do that right now? Yeah, she ready for us? Is she at home or is she at the office?
Karen's at the office and she's going to go log in now.
Okay, well, how about everybody give it about five and then we'll...
All right, I'm at a break. Thank you.
Thank you. Five minute break and then we'll get to the pool.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.